Good evening, everyone. We are going to try to get started in the next three or four minutes here. All right. Good evening, everyone. We're about to get started, but some important information about the Wi-Fi before we do. If you need to get on the network here, the password is hashtag I am H I S D, and that'll get you on the network. So, welcome to the District Advisory Committee meeting this evening. Thank you to our committee members in the room and on Zoom. Thank you to the speakers who have signed up, and thank you to the public who is here to observe the meeting. We have reached a quorum by having over 29 members present in the room. We will also need at least 29 yes votes to approve the DOI in this meeting. We'll begin tonight's meeting with public comment, followed by an overview of the DOI plan from the District of Innovation Committee, and we'll close with the DAC's vote on the District of Innovation plan. Before we transition to public comment, I'd like to take a minute to remind everyone of our process during the comment period and overall for this meeting. Because we have over 30 speakers registered, each speaker will be given one minute to address the DAC. When the timer goes off, we kindly request that you end your comments. I'd like all of us to remember that the DAC is a citizen committee of staff members, parents, and community members who are volunteering their time to serve H I S D and its students. We are pleased that members of the community are here to speak and to observe this meeting, and I'd like to remind everyone that there's no discussion, questions, or feedback between the audience and the DAC. I thank you in advance for aligning to these requests, and in the case that anyone cannot, individuals will be given one warning before being asked to leave the meeting. And with that, we'll go ahead and transition to public comment. We'll start with all of our in-person speakers before transitioning to our speakers who have signed up via Zoom. So, our first speaker is Michelle Williams.
Good evening. Michelle Williams, Houston Education Association. Mr. Miles always says, "There's a tale of two schools," and there are. There's the West Side, and there's the Northeast Side where those 28 schools reside. We know about the conversations that had taken place when TEA came in under the cloak of secrecy and talked about how it wasn't going to affect you. But Dr. Martin Luther King said, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." We are caught in an inescapable network of mutuality, of destiny. Whatever affects one directly affects us, directly affects us all indirectly. If you approve this DOI plan, you are ensuring that your children will graduate with a high school diploma that will guarantee that they will always be the employee, but never the employer. You need to let that sink in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Rebecca Williams is our next speaker.
Good evening. The District of Innovation is invalid and not worth voting for for three reasons. One, nobody on the committee is an educator in the classroom. The Board of Manager does not count as an educator. Second reason, footnotes on the so-called research are coming directly from charter school proponents, which we've been promised that H I S D would not be turned into a charter school district, but as the research shows, it will be one. And the third reason, the third reason that it should not be voted on is mostly the districts that have the, mostly the districts that have the District of Innovation are doing to improve morale, but as we can see, that this District of Innovation is going to use to demoralize it. So, please do not vote on this on behalf of teachers and students.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Christina Acosta. Jessica Campos.
Hello. Many of you here tonight will vote yes to the DOI for the reasons that you believe are the right reasons, but your vote will affect my community dramatically and impact us in a negative way. Passing this DOI will allow you to expand classroom sizes. Didn't TEA, or someone, Mike Miles maybe, say that classroom sizes would be smaller? Please correct me if I'm wrong, but when TEA took over, I thought that classroom sizes were going to be 13 students? I mean, is it even safe to have 32 students in a classroom? By voting yes, you'll be making it easier for TEA to close schools in my community and combine students to neighboring schools. You will be making it okay to have larger classroom sizes, but this is not good for any of us or any of our children. They already don't have enough time to answer our kids' questions with the timers going off, and they don't get, and don't get me started on how your vote yes will allow uncertified teachers in our classrooms. What is really going on? Our Hispanic kids are not enough to have certified teachers. We've already lost 22 certified teachers at our school.
Thank you, Ms. Campos. Tracy Latson.
My name is Tracy Latson. I was actually on the DAC committee, the DOI, I'm sorry, the DOI committee back in 2020. And I would like to talk about the procedures, how different they are from back in 2020 and today. One, the committee actually met for four months. This committee only met for a month. As someone stated earlier, there were no teachers on the committee, there were no principals on the committee, and there were no district heads on the committee. That was very valuable for us because the teacher knew the landscape on one level. There were principals that knew the level on the next level, district supervisors knew the level, and there was a big discussion on the gaps. The committee here, there were no discussions. There couldn't possibly be any discussions on gaps because they don't, they weren't knowledgeable enough for, to actually know what was going on inside the classroom. The committee also asked for...
Thank you, Ms. Latson. That's the end of your time.
...community engagement. We actually had community engagement feedback.
Ms. Latson, that's the end of your time. Thank you. Nikki Banks. Catherine Valdez.
Hi. My children go to Coop Elementary, and today I would like to know, what is the purpose of hiring uncertified teachers? For our students, we need teachers that will set higher standards in education so they can elevate their education, so they can have a better advancement and opportunities in careers. What good is it to hire an uncertified teacher that would just lower standards? Just like we wouldn't want to see a doctor that didn't have a PhD or an MD, why would you do it? Just to save money and bring their bottom line higher? The teachers should all be certified to ensure proper curriculum. We need a higher standard for our students. They're our future. So, again, I ask, is it to save money or is it to have our students be set up to fail? By saying yes to DOI, we are just setting our kids up for failure.
Thank you, Ms. Valdez. Placidio Gomez.
Good evening. I'm glad to see the DOI revisions delay the new teacher evaluation systems by a year. It's an obvious statement of fact that a system evaluating teachers should have substantial teacher inputs. I also believe that it's important for teacher groups to use this extra time to help the administration create the best evaluation system possible. I've heard people associated with the administration say that unions and other groups who oppose the takeover are just against everything and only out for adult interests. And I've heard people from the other side say that Miles was sent to Houston somehow with the mission to destroy public education, and I believe that neither of these characterizations are even remotely true. And it's about time that we recognize that our values are way more aligned than we believe. In particular, we all want to, we all want to close the opportunity gap for Black and Latino students. This means we have to fight against centuries of racism and oppression, and the only way that we could accomplish this is together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Bridget Wade.
Hello, everybody. I'm here tonight, first of all, to say thank you. I want to thank everybody for their time, effort, talents, and gifts. I also want to thank those who are for and opposed to this DOI. I love the fact that people care this much about these issues, how much, how valuable our children are in this city. So, I thank you, first of all, for all of this. I come, and I'll just say this, I stand in full support of the DOI presentation and the DOI product that you all brought to light tonight. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Savant Moore.
Good evening. Your vote tonight is crucial. Consider if it benefits the community and aligns with their wishes. Despite divisive times and a polarizing leader, vote with your heart and conscience. May God bless H I S D and you.
Thank you. Karina Casada.
Those of you appointed by the state should not vote in favor. Taking exemptions from state law should only be considered under local control. This district has had the ability to hire uncertified teachers since 1995. Becoming a DOI makes things opaque and ripe for abuse. Your approval of this plan enables the district to continue with its toxic work environment, causing teachers to leave and facilitating the hiring of unqualified people who won't know any better, won't question, and will only teach to the test. And to be clear, it doesn't matter what the plan says. Legally, the district is not bound to hire uncertified teachers for high school only. Furthermore, any child who has been promoted by grade placement committee must have a certified teacher. DOI cannot exempt you from that legal requirement nor the requirement to have certified bilingual SPED ed teachers. Lastly, "But everyone is doing it" was not acceptable justification when we were teenagers, and it continues to be poor reasoning now. This plan is a word salad without convincing or sound rationale. If the committee were more knowledgeable, then the district already has a lot of flexibility under Texas Education Code. You should read it.
Thank you, Ms. Casada. Katherine Denas.
Good afternoon. Mr. Miles, I don't see you, but this, I'd like to say good afternoon to you and the Board of Managers. Mr. Miles, you came to our community to help our district. You are assisting H I S D by dismantling public education and helping Abbott and Morath push their voucher plan through. Board of Managers, you're supposed to represent our community, but instead you pander to megalomania, a person who obsesses with their own power. Your DOI plan is a disgrace to the community, a shame to education, and a disservice to the children enrolled in H I S D schools. Expanding the school days without compensation and break bulk costs burnout in teachers and students. Teachers are already burnt out because they are afraid to take days off for sickness and mental health. You, Mike Miles, have created a culture of fear and intimidation for dissenting voices are silenced and dismissed. After all, you, Mike Miles, threaten to fire them if they are absent too many times. Mr. Miles, why are you here today, sir? Please vote no on the District of Innovation plan and support the teachers and students within our district.
Thank you. Richard Morris.
I'll be quick. Good evening, everyone. The harmful takeover of H I S D. It is shameful and alarming to our district how this hostile takeover has affected our children and community. Our most vital and essential asset, our children, are important to us. We, the community, want what is in their best interest. We will continue to be vocal and speak out on these injustices. We, the stakeholders, have no authority in the district that we pay taxes and send our children to. This is insane. Our children are presently performing poorly and suffering from academic inequality, as noted by Mr. Miles himself in his statement to the news media, that over 80 schools are projected to receive a failing grade. This is unacceptable. He came into a district with a B-plus rating. Also, we must keep in mind that prior to receiving a B-plus rating, no schools in America were evaluated for two years, 2020 and 21, due to COVID. Our elected officials continue to implement legislation to disenfranchise and rob our children of the vital financial, our assets and resources needed to support their academic success by creating autocracy and pushing vouchers.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Tricia Bishop Watt.
Hi. I'm Tricia Bishop Watt, representing Houston GPS. I want to thank the Innovation Committee and the District Advisory Committee as a whole for your thoughtful engagement throughout this process. H I S D becoming a District of Innovation is long overdue. Ninety-five percent of Texas school districts are DOI. We know there are a lot of hot-button issues in H I S D right now, but this shouldn't be one of them. In reviewing the innovation plan, there is not one proposed exemption that is not already claimed by a multitude of other Texas districts, including many in the Houston area. H I S D is the one lagging behind in this. We know teacher certification remains the most discussed exemption. Opponents of innovation will try to use it to halt this progress. To be clear, 96% of DOI districts, including several Houston districts, have claimed an exemption from teacher certification. There is a critical nationwide teacher shortage. The DOI plan commits to even more stringent standards for certification exemptions than the TEA waiver process used by the district every school year. A vote for this DOI plan is a vote for a higher bar for certification exemptions.
Thank you. Thank you. Jessie Heiner.
Good evening. My name is Jessie, and I am a longtime volunteer of my neighborhood NESA Elementary School, which serves students where 94% are economically disadvantaged, 40% are EB, and 16% receive special education services, twice the H I S D average. Our parents and educators have reported that many staff members from the first day of school are no longer there. Under Mr. Miles, 54 H I S D schools have experienced principal changes in just five months. Under Mr. Miles, Dallas saw a 22% teacher turnover rate. If similar, H I S D stands to lose over 2,000 teachers. Educators are warning us that the proposed DOI will have more consequences that are negatively impacting students than positively. If you pass the DOI and we lose thousands of high-quality frontline educators because of it, what student populations do you think that will impact the most? Please vote no on the DOI proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heiner. Jessica Campos. You already went. Tracy Riley. Okay, Christina Acosta, Nikki Banks, or Tracy Riley. Okay, we're going to transition to our speakers who are joining us via Zoom, and our first speaker is Judith Cruz.
Ms. Cruz, you can turn on your camera and begin.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you may begin.
When I started this DAC and DOI, I'm a trustee and a parent and the Texas Assistant Director for the Education Trust. Thank you for the time and hard work you put into this plan. Becoming a District of Innovation will allow the District the flexibility needed to meet the needs of our students, and I believe that is exactly what is at the core of this plan. We know that the personal school calendar only works for some, but not most students. As a trustee, when monitoring students, we witnessed year over year that students regressed from the beginning of the year and sometimes by double digits. H I S D should take a proactive role in tackling teacher vacancies in the long term by making high-quality preparation pathways more accessible to diverse candidates, allowing the exemption from teacher certification requirements a short-term solution, particularly for CTE teachers who will miss students by having a teacher the entire year. We have the chance to action and benefit students now. I respectfully ask you to consider what your vote today means for our students.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz. Lauren Simmons. Dr. Pamela J. Boveland.
Dr. Boveland, you may turn on your camera and begin.
Good evening. There you go. Sorry. Good evening. When I first heard about District of Innovation, I envisioned a new and exciting classroom experience like project-based learning, interdisciplinary instruction was going to be at the core. Yes. Oh, it was going to be at the core to try to provide exciting learning environments for our children. That was not the case. Instead, DOI is just a laundry list of violations of, is just a violation of the law made legitimate by exemption. It's silly that the largest school district in Texas is not leading the way toward creating exciting learning experiences. Test prep is not quality instruction. Uncertified teachers do not produce a high-performance culture. This plan is a farce. The plan is just an expansion of F. Miles's ego, and the plan will only increase the exodus of dedicated and talented, non-robotic teachers. Please do not approve this plan.
Jennifer Matthew Blessington.
Jennifer Blessington, you may turn on your camera and begin.
I'm an H I S D teacher with 19 years of experience. I'd like to remind everyone that not a single teacher or administrator is on the DOI committee. While I'm not opposed to the DOI in theory and can find good in the exemptions related to college visits and the vape law, this proposal gives far too much freedom to an administration that has not yet earned it. Why would we trust them to listen to us on the calendar when they revise this year's calendar at the last minute without asking for feedback? Why would we trust them to listen to us on teacher appraisal when teachers have been begging for spot forms to be aligned with T tests, and this hasn't been done? Why would we trust them to listen to us when the superintendent and a member of the board were caught on a mic hoping for a small number of registered speakers before a November board meeting? We are facing a teacher retention crisis next year, and I don't believe that small gains in this proposal are worth the risk of losing even more terrific teachers. I know many of you have wanted DOI for a while, but now is not the time. Please vote no.
Thank you, Ms. Blessington. Anita Wadwa.
Anita Wadwa, you may turn on your camera and begin.
Good evening. Under normal circumstances with an elected board, I might not care about whether H I S D turned into a DOI. After all, who could disagree that the vaping law does not perpetuate the school-to-prison pipeline? However, Miles and this board don't have the stature or trust of the public to be able to be given free rein on all choices made for my daughters. There's no indication that if we give them an inch, they won't take a yard. If we advocate for uncertified high school teachers, when will you seek exemption for all teachers? Weren't we taken over due to the mistaken notion that one high school had not had an uncertified math teacher for years? Without transparency, there can be no DOI. Vote no or vote yes with people who thought it fit to fire a highly accomplished veteran teacher whose adult child has cancer. This is the level to which we have sunk. There is no nuance with Mike Miles. It's his way or the highway. If you give him an inch, he'll take a yard. The community is watching you, and we will remember your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Rivlin.
Sarah Rivlin, you may turn on your camera and begin.
Okay. Teacher certification requires a year of classroom observation, student teaching, and passing content knowledge exams. Teacher experience matters. New teachers require a lot of support, and most schools... New teachers require a lot of support, and most schools don't have the resources to support them. For this reason, they're more likely to quit. Miles wants you to believe that teacher certification is a formality which is preventing highly-qualified applicants from teaching in HISD. He is wrong. Our newest hires have been both uncertified and inexperienced. Inexperienced teachers are always a liability, but certification helps. Certification indicates some experience and training. A nationwide teacher shortage should be met with better working conditions to retain experienced teachers, not desperately hiring a revolving door of novice teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rivlin. Yvonne Martinez? Yvonne Martinez, you may turn on your camera and begin. We can't hear you. Ms. Martinez, you're on mute.
Good evening. I'm an HISD parent who has been a school volunteer for over ten years at Title I schools. I'm asking you to vote no tonight. Our teachers do not have any confidence in our current leadership. Our families do not have any confidence in our current leadership. Unless you engage teachers in a more meaningful way, these changes will further alienate our teachers and families. If that means delaying this vote, so be it. We want all students to have an experienced certified teacher next school year. I'm asking you to vote no tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Viviana Morales? Jackie White Anderson? Jackie Anderson, please turn on your camera and begin. Jackie Anderson, please turn on your camera and begin.
Yes, I am Jackie Anderson, president of the Houston Federation of Teachers. The district of innovation proposed by F. Mike Miles that is being presented tonight for approval is a Trojan horse. The DOI will act as a blank check to an unelected board and an uncertified superintendent. It gives those that are unaccountable to us the permission to dismiss state education regulations that are in the best interest of our children. This is no innovation. There is nothing innovative about the plan. There's nothing innovative about changing the rules of the game. In fact, it's true. It's seeking a pass for being held to the state minimum standards. Instead of seeking a pass, HISD should focus on providing a quality education and a positive learning environment from fear and intimidation to all children regardless of zip code. Members of the DAC have expressed that stakeholders speaking tonight are too ignorant for their voices to matter, and that is problematic. Members of the DAC, do you know that the plan can be modified?
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Your time has ended. Andrea Negri? Andrea Negri, you may turn on your camera and begin. Andrea Negri, you can turn on your camera and begin.
According to the Houston Chronicles reporting, Mr. Miles says he promises to uphold the implementation guidelines for the DOI. As you prepare to vote, I would like to remind you of other promises that he's made this school year. Miles told the Chronicle Editorial Board that teachers at highly-rated schools wouldn't feel much difference this year. We now know that to be untrue. They have to post LOs and DOLOS, pace their lessons with a timer, implement a prescribed list of MRSs, and receive multiple observations a week. This summer, parents fought to keep language at magnet schools and board policy, and last week, almost all of the language about school choice was stripped from the board's educational philosophy. He told NBC News in August that students in NES schools would still have access to books, but students in these schools told Houston Lanning their ability to get to these books is limited. Keep these promises in mind as you weigh today's guarantees, and thank you all for your service.
Thank you. Jasmine Colvin? Jasmine Colvin, you may turn on your camera and begin.
Good evening. I am Jasmine Colvin, representing Woodreys in Houston. The DAC is a council of stakeholders in HISD assigned the duty of task of working with the board of managers and superintendent as they implement plans to propel these students forward. As you consider your vote on DOI, please consider the following. Along with school, you can decide to increase achievement. You can support efforts to close achievement gaps among student populations, especially those who are struggling academically. Zero tolerance discipline policies like expulsion from first-time vaping perpetuate the school-to-prison pipeline, which does report to impact students of color. With localized autonomy, student learning environment, and thus achievement are less impacted. Chronic absenteeism has various roots that include work conflicts, social challenges, trauma, and academic struggles, all of which have a negative impact on student outcome. By allowing limited learning opportunities through the course-credit exam, students can improve the post-secondary success. Please hold against the district innovation.
Thank you, Ms. Colvin. Melissa Yarborough? Melissa Yarborough, you may turn on your camera and begin.
Hi, thank you. I want to speak about the uncertified, hiring of uncertified teachers, which is very problematic to me as both a teacher and a parent with two children in HISD. So I hear that you're all stakeholders. Are you stakeholders in the same way that I am? Are your children going to have uncertified teachers? Are you going to be the one who doesn't get the letter informing you that your children's teachers are uncertified? Please listen to the parents who don't want our children to be in these overcrowded classrooms with untrained teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yarborough. Claudia Rios? Claudia Rios is not on Zoom at this time. Sarah Collins? Sarah Collins, you may turn on your camera and begin.
Good evening. The state took over Houston ISD and now wants exemptions from their own laws. Why? Mike Miles has already stacked your committee with people he's chosen in order to get his way, so where is the limit? Why should we trust him to implement the DOI with fidelity when it's been proven that he doesn't follow through on promises and makes last-minute changes that are confusing and chaotic for everyone? This is not a pattern that is worthy of trust. Data from the state of Texas itself shows that uncertified teachers do not stay in the field. There's already a way to hire them under waivers, so why is the DOI necessary? Under DOI, the only difference is eliminating the notification to parents about uncertified teachers and the fact that uncertified teachers cannot legally teach sped or bilingual students, and there is no exemption for that. One of the original reasons for the takeover was the idea that Kashmir had an uncertified math teacher for a number of years. If that was true and used as a reason to justify the takeover, then why are we looking to hire uncertified teachers now?
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Christine Hurley? Christine Hurley, you may turn on your camera and begin.
To become a district of innovation and utilize exemptions to improve student outcomes, there must be a foundation of reliability, which we've yet to experience with this board. During campus walk-throughs, Miles and the board say they see happy and successful students, teachers, and staff. The truth is, the days they visit are the height of stress and intimidation for the entire school staff. The board's perspective is not reality, and they deny, dismiss, and invalidate the lived experiences of students and the school community by not acknowledging the toxic work environment now permeating HISD. If they truly had HISD's best interests in mind, they would cultivate a transparent relationship with the community and use the feedback they've received to course-correct. As it stands, I strongly urge the committee to reject the DOI proposal on the basis the current leadership does not lead with fidelity and cannot be trusted to utilize these exemptions in a beneficial way.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley.
Yep.
Maria Benzam? Maria Benzam, you may turn on your camera and begin.
Hi, my name is Maria Benzam. Thank you for your service on the DAC. I'm concerned with the exemption on developing a local teacher appraisal system because it will not foster teacher and student motivation. The focus is on the wrong outcomes. Even though it is not in the DOI plan, Mr. Miles has already proposed a model where teachers would be evaluated based on the school action plan, student achievement, student surveys, and teacher performance on walk-throughs. The district plan drives the school action plan, and the district has shown that they are obsessed with over-testing our students. In addition to the STAR test, which is based on state TECS, now teachers and students have to worry about growth on national norm-referenced MAP tests. HISD schools will become a place of more testing and more test-prepping, not a place of more learning. Vote no on the DOI plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benzam. Sarah Lyons? She is not on Zoom at this time. Diana Candida? Diana Candida, please turn on your camera and you may begin.
Hi, this is Diana Candida. Let me just pull up my speech. Sorry, I wasn't ready because I had to be somewhere. Okay. My name is Diana Candida. I'm a concerned parent who opposes DOI. The board unquestioningly rubber-stamps all of Mike Miles's proposals. By approving the DOI, the guardrails are being taken off, resulting in an increased rate of destruction of Houston's public education system. Of the DOI proposals I'm against is the exemption to hire uncertified teachers. The turnover rate for uncertified teachers is typically higher than for certified teachers. The quality of instruction is lower. In addition, there is a higher proportion of uncertified teachers in low-income schools. This exemption will increase the inequality. If you want better outcomes and success for all HISD students, vote no on DOI. If you want high-quality education for students, vote no on DOI. The quality of education and culture has already suffered since the TEA takeover. DOI will be worse. Vote no on DOI.
Thank you, Ms. Candida. Dana Sangerhausen? Dana Sangerhausen, you may turn on your camera and begin.
Okay, can you hear me? Great. So my name is Dana Sangerhausen. I'm a parent of two children at schools in a community. I'd like to express my concerns regarding this modern staffing exemption. So certification should be non-negotiable when we define what makes a teacher qualified. There's no amount of enthusiasm that can compensate for certification in a professional field. I ask you, would you use services from a health practitioner, plumber, or hairstylist who has not achieved a certain degree in their field? Certification establishes a baseline of training shown to meet minimum acceptable outcomes. This exemption would create a burden on experienced teachers and staff who will have to shore the gap between these individuals, and our children will surely fill that burden. I need transparency from HISD on what constitutes qualified before I could even consider this. And if we must have any non-certified teachers with the same appraisal system that's in place, or if we are moving forward, we need the same appraisal system so that we can...
Thank you, Ms. Sangerhausen. Yan Rabay? Yan Rabay, you may turn on your camera and begin. I believe you're on mute.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, you may begin.
Okay. Hello, my name is Yan Rabay. I am a community member, taxpaying community member, and a certified teacher with eighteen years of teaching experience. Please vote against the DOI exemption this evening to allow hiring uncertified teachers. The district already has the ability since 1995 to hire non-certified teachers for course subjects, and since 2015 to hire teachers for CTE subjects. So why is Mr. Miles pursuing this exemption? The benefit to the district eliminating certification under a DOI is that the district can also remove the requirement of parental notification that their child is being taught by a non-certified teacher. Is it that Mr. Miles not have fidelity to parents, do not want to be transparent, or accountable to parents? Please vote no tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Monique Mahler? Monique Mahler, you may turn on your camera and begin.
Hi, thank you. My name is Monique, and I'm a parent of two students at HISD. Certification should be a non-negotiable when considering employing teachers. We have numerous long-tenured teachers who have received proper education to become teachers. Allowing others to teach without proper certification degrades those teachers and further harms our children. I understand it is difficult to get qualified teachers in place, but perhaps paying them a proper wage, not measuring their success by one test that we know is not indicative of actual learning, and not expecting them to put their lives on the line every day because we refuse to address gun safety issues could be used as tools to spice up people that are actually dedicated to the profession. Mike Miles and this board purport to have the district's best interests and the children in mind, but all actions thus far have proven otherwise. Please vote no on the DOI plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mahler. Lucretia Allen? Lucretia Allen, you may turn on your camera and begin.
I'm Lucretia Allen, the parent of a fourth grader at Atlantic Elementary and the vice president of the PTO. Request for a way... president of the PTO. A request for waivers to bypass parents' notification, increase class size, and hire non-certified teachers indicate a lack of accountability for the potential destruction Mike Myers is working towards. Current studies highlight the negative impact of increased class sizes on test scores and learning outcomes. With an aim to enhance academic performance, the question arises, how can teachers effectively assist more than 22 students? Certification reflects the knowledge of a professional. If you wouldn't see a non-certified doctor, why allow a non-certified teacher to teach? The beauty of the internet is you can research everyone's resume. The DOI plan developed in collaboration with two attorneys, one board member, a formacist, a lobbyist, and a doctor lack input from individuals with direct K through 12 education classroom experience, real stakeholders such as teachers, principals, and counselors with relevant degrees. Paying school taxes should guarantee a service that Mike Myers appeared to fall short.
Josephine Smith?
Josephine Smith, you may turn on your camera and begin. Josephine Smith, you may turn on your camera and begin.
Good evening, and thank you very much for the work you've done on your committee. I support Houston ISD becoming a district of innovation. I believe Houston Independent School District should have the authority and the flexibility to adopt policies that best serve the children in our community. I'm sorry, I'm speaking. Can you hear me?
Yes, you may be-
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, shall start over. I support HISD becoming a district of innovation. Good evening, and thank you very much for the work you've done on your committee. I support Houston ISD becoming a district of innovation. I believe Houston Independent School District should have the authority and the flexibility to adopt policies that best serve the children in our community. Sorry, I'm speaking. Can you hear me?
Ms. Smith, can you mute the meeting? Mute the meeting on your end?
I'm sorry, yes, tell me again.
Ms. Smith, we're going to move on to the next speaker, and we'll come back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Danielle Amoa?
Danielle is not in the Zoom at this time. Danielle is not in the Zoom at this time.
Allison Chapin?
Jay Allison Chapin, you may now begin. Please turn your camera on. Jay Allison Chapin, please turn on your camera. You may now begin.
Ms. Chapin, we're going to move on and we'll come back. Dani Hernandez?
Dani Hernandez is not in Zoom at this time.
Melissa Law?
Melissa Law, you may turn on your camera and begin. Ms. Law, you're still on mute. If you can go ahead and unmute and begin.
I'm a parent speaking on behalf of an HISD teacher who didn't feel comfortable sharing this herself, which is probably something. As an HISD teacher who has grown more and more concerned about the relationship between HISD and its teachers and the community as a whole, I don't believe that voting for the DOI will improve that relationship. Considering that the initial DOI committee did not include teachers, I'm immediately hesitant on trusting HISD to act in the best interest of students, teachers, and families. I would like to be clear that DOI as a concept is not the problem, so much as the lack of trust in HISD. There are too many questions still left unanswered when it comes to how exactly HISD intends on using exemptions they're asking for. Can we rely on HISD to listen and take into account the input from stakeholders such as teachers and parents? Can we rely on HISD to not go back on what they had initially agreed upon? Until HISD has built back its trust with the community, it could not be trusted to be a DOI. Right now, we need to focus on repairing the relationship between HISD, the community, and supporting our students. Please vote no.
Thank you, Ms. Law. Nathalie Reyna?
Nathalie Reyna is not in the Zoom at this time.
Erica Garcia?
Erica Garcia is not in Zoom at this time.
Ruth Kravitz?
Ruth Kravitz, you may turn on your camera and begin. Ruth Kravitz, you may now begin.
Thank you so much. I'm a retired teacher and administrator and co-founder of CVPE. If we had an elected board accountable to the public and a superintendent who spoke the truth, I could support some aspects of DOI like an earlier start time, but there's nothing, no guardrail, no legally binding anything to keep Miles to his word. I oppose the teacher evaluation system exemption. It will send teachers fleeing to other districts, and this is bad for schoolchildren. I oppose eliminating the certification requirements for high school teachers. If approved, the state is legally obligated to issue a blanket exemption from all certification requirements regardless of Miles's assurances that it will only be for high school. In a study of 400,000 HISD students over six years, certified teachers were found to be significantly more effective than teachers without certification. Education reform should begin by imagining schools that students want to attend and that teachers want to work in. This is not that. Please vote no. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Kravitz. Courtney Revels?
Courtney Revels is not on Zoom at this time.
Jane Freo?
Jane Freo, you may turn on your camera and begin.
Good evening. My concern with HISD becoming a DOI in this process is that we get to the hiring of uncertified teachers. HISD's special education is still not compliant with the TEA and has been for many years. It's important for this committee to understand that the majority of students receiving special education services in HISD have a place code of 40, which is a mainstream general education setting. This means that HISD educators in general education classrooms must be trained and knowledgeable in delivering special education services to students in that setting. Special education is not a place. This committee of noneducators likely does not understand that, and in voting for DOI, you are further hurting students like mine, who sits in CTE classes in high school with these same kinds of issues. The district is not in special education compliance now, and if you give the district the authority to hire uncertified teachers, the district will continue to fail students' capabilities.
Thank you. I'm going to go back through all of the Zoom speakers who were not present and give them an opportunity to speak if they are now present. Christina Acosta? Lauren Simmons?
Oh, sorry. Christina Acosta is here. Christina Acosta, please turn on your camera. You may now begin.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Hold on, I'm trying to find my notes. Okay, my name is Christina Acosta, and I've been a parent, volunteer for over 12 years and counting. Vote no on the DOI plan. Hiring of non-certified teachers is unethical. You shouldn't go to a doctor who did not pass the board exam. Even if he did well in medical school, he has not been certified to, um, he has not, hold on once again, he has not been certified to practice. And if he does do that, then it is malpractice. Please, we need the best certified teachers, not uncertified, a knowledgeable people with a pulse to teach our children. I'm reminded of the quote, "Don't sit down and wait for the opportunities to come. Get up and make them cry mad on CJ Walker." Like her, I'm the voice for my children, for our Latino communities, por el pueblo de habla española. For our better HISD, for the sake of our children, please vote no on the DOI plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, now we'll go back to three speakers from Zoom who were not present the first time around. Sarah Lyons?
She's left. She left.
Jay Allison Chapin?
Jay Allison Chapin, you may now begin. Jay Allison Chapin, you may now begin. Ms. Chapin, you may begin. Ms. Chapin, if you can hear us, you may begin.
Let's move on to Josephine Smith.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead.
My name is Jay Allison Chapin. Okay. My name is Allison Chapin. I am here to ask you to vote no on DOI. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please begin.
Okay. I'm asking you to vote no on DOI. Teacher appraisals are too important to be quickly put together by Mr. Miles. Class-sized waivers are too important. Teachers can't teach 28 1st graders or 30 second graders. Please vote no. Please vote no. We don't need any more musicals in these professional development.
Thank you. Josephine Smith?
Josephine Smith, you may begin.
Go ahead, Ms. Smith.
Thank you. I support HISD becoming a district of innovation. I believe HISD should have the authority and the flexibility to develop policies that best serve the students in our community. And these would include setting the school calendar, the daily school class schedule, attendance policies that best advance student success, and developing a appropriate teacher evaluation program. I hope this committee will vote yes on this innovation plan, and thank you for your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Dani Hernandez?
Dani Hernandez, you may now begin.
Hi, my name is Dani Hernandez, and I have been a student, teacher, administrator, and I am currently the trustee for HISD, the elected trustee for the district. I would first want to thank everyone on the DAC because I know that you're volunteering right now, and you want to do what's best for students in HISD. And I'm here in support of the DOI, although I agree that it's not perfect. I support a flexible and earlier start time to the calendar year, and I know that this is essential for the majority of our students. Moreover, the school-to-prison pipeline is real. Sending students to DAP for vaping contributes to the school-to-prison pipeline, and we need to ensure that we are protecting our students. Teacher vacancies for CTE courses have also been historically hard to staff, and we need to make sure that our students have teachers to teach the courses so that they have the opportunity to take the courses that they want. Right now, we have an opportunity to change and make positive change and real change for HISD students, so please don't miss out on this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez.
Thank you.
That concludes the public comment portion of our agenda. I'd like to thank all of our speakers who are here in person, as well as the speakers on Zoom, for joining us this evening and sharing their comments. We'll now transition to a presentation from the District of Innovation Committee.
Thank you. My name is Edgar Cologne, and I am a member of the District of Innovation Committee. And again, I want to welcome everybody to our meeting. And obviously, I want to thank all of you, not only the members of the DAC, but also the members of the public for the time that they're spending here. Thank you so much for taking time out of your busy schedules to be with us in this very important day. As we all know by now, the district, in terms of District of Innovation, the flexibility became available since 2015 by the Texas Legislature, and 973 school districts are DOI. That represents roughly 95% of the districts in the states. We believe that HISD students also deserve the flexibility that is allowed by a DOI plan. The purpose of the plan is to act in collaboration with stakeholders and allow the district to improve student outcomes and deliver more services effectively by exempting the district from specific statutory requirements. Here are the members of the DOI committee. As you are going to see, I believe that we have a very diverse group in terms of all walks of life. We have staff members that we needed for the research that we require in writing the plan, parents, educators. They have been part of this committee. Also, you're going to see diversity in terms of race, gender, and professions. The timeline, as we know, we started the process in September, on September 14th, when the DOI Committee was appointed by the Board. Then, the, uh, we started our work September 26th. And in this, I have to mention that there has been a lot of work, as we reported to you last week. We met over 10 times, and one of the things that we realized very early on in the process was that we were going to have to meet a lot more days. And as we started meeting a lot more days, we also started to extending the hours of our meetings, as we realized the challenge that we had at hand. A couple of the things that I also mentioned last week are worth repeating. There were a couple of words that were coming over and over again in our DOI meetings, and it was "research and rewrite," "research and rewrite." We challenged the staff to give us more data to back up the, uh, the guidelines and the exceptions that we wanted. And we were also asking the, uh, we challenged ourselves, challenged the committee, and challenged the staff to come up with the guidelines that were going to serve as guardrails when we are putting together our plan. So, back last week, November 8th, we presented the plan to you, to the DAC. The, after the meeting that we had last week, DOI went back to committee. We went back and took all of your comments extremely seriously, and we revised the plan as you have it today. The plan was then posted back on November 10th, the 30-day requirement per law, and here we are, ready to vote on the plan that we are presenting to you today. If the DAC approves this plan by a majority vote, then the plan is going to the Board at its December 14th meeting, where it would require a 2/3 of a vote for the plan to be implemented and adopted. Just a very quick overview, a snapshot of the plan. There is an introduction that, you know, we want to support student achievement. There is a timeline that I just explained. The term of the plan is five years, beginning January 2024. We have a comprehensive educational plan, and here, we want to align the plan with the vision stated by HISD's Board. And then we have exemptions and innovations, and these basically fall into three strategic priority areas. One, the quality of instruction, modern staffing, and improved schools. You're also then going to see, as we discuss the plan, you're going to see a framing. And here, we are basically, again, explaining the rationale and the benefits for each proposed exemption. We again challenge the staff to give us comparable data from Texas and the country in support of the particular exemption that we are proposing. And then number three, implementation guidelines that are going to provide clear expectations of what we expect from HISD leadership. With that, I pass the microphone.
Thank you so much, Edgar. My name is Lauren Haller Fontaine. I am a product of HISD, and I'm raising fourth-generation HISD students. So this District of Innovation Plan means a lot to me and to my family and to the students of HISD. So I want to take us back a little bit and remind the folks in the room about what the DAC is, what is the District of Innovation Committee? And the DAC is a district-level committee that advises the Board and the Superintendent in establishing and reviewing the district's educational goals, objectives, and major district-wide classroom instructional programs. The purpose of the DAC is to promote the excellence in education and provide specialized supports for all HISD students through community representation. The DAC provides valuable input to the Superintendent, to his leadership team, and to the Board of Trustees, who ultimately have the decision-making authority with respect to the district. The DAC is comprised of campus-based professionals. It's comprised of classroom teachers, district-level professional staff, parents, community members, and business representatives. The DOI Committee is mostly made up of DAC members. And we are parents, we are educators, we are community members. We released the DOI plan, as Edgar mentioned, last Monday to the DAC. Then last Wednesday, we had a DAC meeting with feedback, and we, each one of the members of the DOI Committee sat down with each one of you, and we got your feedback. We listened, and we implemented your feedback into the revision of the plan. So today, tonight, we're going to highlight some of those revisions that we made based on what we heard from you all. So you spoke, and we listened, and we removed three of the exemptions. The first exemption that we moved, that we removed was the parental notification. We heard from the DAC, and we heard from the community, and this was not a very popular exemption, and therefore, we heard what you said, and we removed it. The second exemption was the behavioral coordinator exemption. The DAC was concerned about the lack of a point person with respect to behavior and behavioral issues. While we did remove that exemption, we do hope that the, the community at the school works together, the behavioral coordinator, the teacher, the staff, and the principal work together with respect to behavior, because this is a community effort. It should not be one single individual who handles behavior for a campus. And the third thing that we heard was class size. We, the DAC stated that there wasn't enough clarity around the implementation, and you expressed concern about the impacts on teachers if this exemption was included. Again, you spoke, and we listened. So now I'm going to start talking about the exemptions and the innovations and the updates that we made based on your feedback. And, and let's level set here. The goal of our District of Innovation is to do two things, right? It is to provide our students with a best-in-class education. This plan is about our students and providing the tools and the resources that they need for the future. And we're trying to prepare our students for Destination 2035. So the first exemption was the first day of school exemption. So HISD seeks the exemption to start instruction before the Fourth Monday of August. Here's what we know. We know that research shows that extending the school year by more than 10 days improves student achievement more substantially than grade retention, highly effective teachers, and reduced class size. This is an exemption that we need. This is an exemption that our students need. We know that 99.3% of the districts with innovation plans have this exemption. So again, you spoke, and we listened. So in our implementation guidelines, we added that the implement, we added that the district should solicit community feedback with respect to any revised calendars. We also clarified that this, that this, this innovation will be implemented in this 2024, 2025 school year. However, during that school year, we will not exceed 180 school days for our students. And we additionally provided guidance to reiterate that a competitive compensation package reflecting the expanded duties would be implemented for our teachers. The second exemption is, sorry, the second exemption is our teacher appraisal system. So HISD will develop a local teacher appraisal system to be implemented in the 2025 and 2026 school year. Again, you spoke, and we listened. So we strengthened the implementation guidelines to provide clarity with respect to the development of this appraisal system. We delayed the implementation of this system until the 2025, 2026 school year to allow for the feedback that we so desperately need with respect to this exemption. We also directed the district to provide rigorous, solicit rigorous teacher and community input with respect to the system. We directed the district to solicit rigorous teacher and community feedback regarding how the different performance measures are weighted. So for example, one of the possible performance measures will be student feedback. And so we want to have teacher and we want to have community feedback with respect to how much a student feedback will be weighted in the appraisal system. We also clarified the use of our student surveys, and we directed the district to leverage best practices with respect to the teacher appraisal system. Next, we have our teacher certification. So with respect to teacher certification, HISD seeks the flexibility to hire non-certified teachers. Again, you spoke, and we listened. One of the things that we, we have, we have done initially, the, the implementation guideline provided that we would allow non-certified teachers for K through 2, then middle school and high school. But based on the feedback that we received from you, we removed elementary and middle school from this exemption, and we only focused on high school. We also, based on your feedback, we, we, we made the modification that uncertified teachers will need to be certified for two, will need to be certified within two years rather than three. And then we also made sure that it was clear that the district will have a rigorous hiring process with respect to non-certified teachers. But again, if you look at the implementation guidelines, we give priority to our certified teachers, and then we go from there. And I'd also like to address special education, bilingual education, and pre-K. Statutorily, those things cannot be included in this exemption. So rest assured that sped, bilingual, and pre-K cannot be included in this exemption. We also removed, okay, we also just want to take it back to something that we said before, and again, we heard the community and we heard the DAC. So yes, we're asking for teachers to be non-certified, have the ability to have non-certified teachers with respect to high school. However, parents will be notified. So if we get this exemption, parents will still be notified because we, you spoke, and we listened, and we removed the parental notification from the DOI plan. Last week, I was able to go to a middle school visit, and I witnessed a teacher apprentice teaching a, teaching a class. I thought it was a certified teacher. She was amazing, she was enthusiastic, the kids were, were learning from her, she was infectious. And come to find out, she was a non-certified teacher, and she was a teacher apprentice. If this is done right, which is what we have put in our implementation guidelines, this can work for our students. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Bill to wrap this up.
Hi. Good evening. Bill Horwath, HISD parent, community member, and consultant in education. I am going to continue forward with the remaining exemptions. So the next one up is staff professional development. This exemption allows the district to develop and support district and division-based professional development. It's important that the district ensures that all teachers and principals, all educators, are learning from instructional experts, being coached to achieve instructional mastery and working collaboratively. And so we really are excited about this exemption. We, again, listened to your feedback, as Lauren was talking through, and so made some modifications, especially as it relates to the implementation guidance on this exemption. We added some more clarity around campus-level PD will continue to occur, and indicated that most PD will take place at the campus location. We also committed to ensuring that each campus would have a role in designing PD offerings so that professional development can be tailored to the campus level. And finally, added some language to ensure that all professional development takes place in a productive environment with the appropriate number of attendees venue, for the venue. The next exemption is the minimum attendance standard for class credits. This exemption allows flexibility for high school students to receive credit for out-of-school work or learning opportunities that can also count towards course credit. We think this is great for kids because it allows for students in good academic standing to focus on content mastery over seat time and prepares them for post-secondary work through multiple mechanisms. We again listened to some of the feedback that you provided us last week. You were so excited about this one. You encouraged us to consider expanding this one to the middle school grades as well. At this point in time, we thought it made more sense to maintain this exemption at the high school level, just thinking there's maybe a little bit too much risk allowing younger students to miss the instructional time. Two more. Okay, visits to higher education. This exemption provides flexibility for students to visit higher education institutions as high school juniors and seniors and get an excused absence. Right now, there's only two allowed excused absences. This expands that to more days. We believe students in good standing should not be penalized for exploring options to find the one that's best fit for them after their K-12 experience here in the district. And after your feedback, we expanded this exemption to cover both military and trade schools as well. And then lastly, vaping and DAEP. HISD is accept, is seeking this exemption for mandatory DAEP placement for vaping-related offenses. We think this is good for kids because the state's zero-tolerance policy requires removal on the first instance based on a first offense and does not allow for any discretion based on the nature of that offense. So we made a minor tweak to this one, again, with the implementation guidance, clarifying the need to develop disciplinary interventions for repeat offenders in the implementation guidance. So just want to say thank you to the DAC members for all of your really helpful feedback. We really did try and take that into consideration in adjusting the exemptions, removing some in this final DOI plan. Lastly, we are excited that a lot of organizations have stepped forward to support this final DOI plan after it's been posted. We've included just a handful of organizations up on the screen here that we're particularly proud are backing this DOI plan. We know there's been a lot of discussion about how the DOI plan is best going to serve students most in need, and so we really think that, especially based on the support of some of these organizations, that this plan is going to support our students in need in the district. So thank you very much, and I'll turn it back over.
Thank you to Edgar and Lauren and Bill for presenting this evening and to the entire DOI Committee for the work that you all have put in over the last few months. We're now going to transition to our vote. We'll do a roll call of each member, and I'm requesting that everybody in the room give a verbal yes or no for your vote, either to approve the DOI plan or not to approve the DOI plan. So yes, if you're voting to approve, no, if you are not voting to approve. For all of our members on Zoom, when I call your name, please make sure your camera is on and give us a verbal yes or no vote. Sarah Anthony.
My camera's not working for some reason. I vote no.
Alora Anoma. Allure Anoma? Allure Anoma? Okay, we'll come back. Ajima Onagueji? Ajima? Rohan Atiya? Rohan is not present. Caitlin Baldwin?
Yes.
Celeste Baretto Milligan?
Yes.
Shayla Bowden? Charlene Bustamante?
Yes.
Andy Cow? Jessica Carter? Jessica Castillo? I believe Jessica is not present. Paula Caesar? Tony Cervantes?
Yes.
Lucy Savayos? Elizabeth Chapman? Edgar Cologne? Naomi Doyle Madrid? Karen Duffy? Linda Flores Olson? Deidra Fontaine? Lauren Fontaine? Deidra Ford Robinson? Tasia Gardner? Clara Gerard? Heather Golden? Anita Griffin? Eileen Harrell? Sarah Hall? Jeremy Harris? Celia Hartman Sims? Mary Hendricks? I believe Mary is not present. George Hitner? Bill Horwath? Sarah Ischierto? Carnard Jones? Zaire Juarez? Chandler Langham?
Yes.
Amy Maddox? Uche Ndefo? Daisy Nino? Tish Ochoa? Deera Parker? Terrence Rice? Roshunda Roberts Jackson? I believe she's not present. Christina Rodriguez? Also not present. Marcos Rosales? Daniel Santos? Roxana Serrano? Not present. Leslie Smith? Charles Stein? Janice Thomas? Gregory Thompson? Teresa Tran? Kristy Turnquest?
Yes.
Jerome Veelman? Mac Walker? Stephanie Witherspoon?
No.
Bradley Ray? Steven Wright? Okay, I'd like to go back through the people who are on Zoom to give them one more chance. Allure Anoma?
Yes.
Ajima? Is she still on?
Yes.
Thank you, I see you. Deidra Fontaine? Uche Ndefo? Is there anyone present on Zoom who has not been able to vote? Okay, please be patient while we tally and compare the votes to make sure that we have the same numbers. Uche Ndefo?
Yes.
So myself as well, the two co-chairs all have the same vote tally. There are 41 yes votes and 18 no or not-present votes. So the DOI plan has passed the approval of the DAC this evening. I'd like to thank you all for, I'd like to thank you all for your time and your dedication this evening. That is the end of our meeting. I'll be back in touch with the committee the week after Thanksgiving in order to share updates about our next meeting on December 5th. Thank you.